Called the Committee of the Whole Meeting for March 24, 2025. Adoption of the agenda recommended that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of March 24, 2024, March 24, 2025, sorry, be adopted as amended, I believe, with this one, because there's a, was this an additional one? Yeah, okay, as amended. Moved by Councillor Adi, Councillor Randawa. All in favor? Okay, first, I have to read a statement of the Chair. So during the Committee of the Whole, issues are not firmly adopted and it is not a question and answer session with council. Presentations should be brief, five minutes would be ideal, please, as we have a number of presenters this evening. Please address any comments or questions through the Chair. A reminder, there is no decisions made at this meeting, with all requests referred to staff for review, report and recommendation to council. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first presentation is from Staff and Andrew Lockhart from Atmospheric Perspective regarding the Mariners Park Rotary Banshell.
Hi there, so I'll just get this presentation going. So for those of you in the room who might not know me, I'm Veronica Stewart. I'm the manager of Communications Engagement and Social Development. And I've been working with planning and some of the community partners on some of the design work that's happening in Mariners Park. So we just want to do a little bit of a very brief update on overall what's occurring in Mariners Park. And then also to specifically present the designs that the architect has been working on for the Rotary Banshell. So Mariners Park is kind of considered a flagship park in our Parks Plan. It's among the most frequently used parks in the community. It's really proximate to downtown, the cruise ships, and it's used for existing events quite frequently. In 2022 and 2023, Tourism Prince Rupert engaged our landscape architect, and that is Andrew, who's on the call with us, to do a high-level redesign of the park and look at ways that we could kind of, you know, make it more attractive and more appealing and beneficial for both residents and visitors to the community. So based on that initial design work that Tourism did, we've engaged with Andrew again to support us on a number of different projects that are happening in the park. So one of them is the Japanese-Canadian Legacies Project, which council would be aware of. That's to do a memorial to Japanese Canadians that were forcibly removed from Prince Rupert during World War II. And that's a grant-funded project that the city was approached by the JCLS about. We're also working on replacement and revitalization of the memorial walls. That project is currently underway. There's some initial structural assessments happening currently and, and design work. And then there is also the Banshell Project, which is led by the Rotary Club. And that is going to be the main subject of the presentation today. But just as a high-level overview about the different types of projects that are occurring in the park and that we're all kind of working with the same architect and landscape design team in order for everything to speak coherently to each other, so that everything kind of melds well in the park and it follows kind of an overall design. So just a really brief overview of the Rotary Banshell Project. It was brought forward by Rotary in 2024, and I believe that there was talk of it much before that. Council did provide direction in 2024 to work with Rotary and to support the project in principle. They've now come up with the design concepts that will be presented today that have integrated staff and community input. And they have fundraising underway, which is part of why this is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. There, to secure funding, they do need confirmation that the city will own and maintain the asset from council. And so they're going to be continuing to fundraise and the actual construction timeline for the project will be based on the outcomes of that fundraising and part of it is contingent on what council decides today. So without further ado, so yeah, there is a request for Rotary in the regular meeting agenda that council can decide on a later date. This is just the presentation portion, so no decisions necessary at this point. And I will hand it over to Andrew Lockhart, who has been a really great help to us. He's visited Prince Rupert a number of times, just in initial design consultations with Tourism and also for his work on the JCLS project. He was up here a couple of weeks ago and he's been a really good asset to us. So I will let him take it from here. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Veronica. Can everybody hear me okay? Great, okay, we only have a few minutes, so we'll do, do our best to be, to be very brief. Thank you, first of all, thank you so much for, for the invite from the community. Really, really appreciate it. And thanks to Veronica for all her hard work, I think, through this, through this process. So I just want to take a brief step back to 2022, when we were doing a master plan for the overall park. These are the five guiding principles that we established with Tourism Prince Rupert. They were reinforced by some community engagement that we did back in 2022. I'm going to take just a brief moment to read just the titles of these five, because I do think that they're really important to our work moving forward. So the park, the first goal is to create a heart, a heart of civic life, to really embrace sustainability, to create a local character that's specific to Prince Rupert, and to reinforce a connection to coastal life and also a connection to Simshen culture. So I think all five of these are, are really, really important. And so again, I'll be very brief. Taking a look at the site, you can see the park on the upper left side of the screen. The area outlined in red is the area that is anticipated for the Banshell Project. One thing that's really important to note is that there is an existing Banshell in the park. And one of the challenges, I shouldn't quite call it a Banshell, but there is a stage that at one point had a fabric structure over it. One of the challenges of that site that's been identified by the community is a lot of wind that disrupts the performances. So the community, through, I think, a series of different consultations, identified this site here as being much better dealing with, with some of the wind. And you can see some photos of the park around, but I'm sure everyone here is very, very familiar with that. I'm just going to speak very briefly to the design intent for the project and then we'll dive into what it looks like. So being a Banshell, one, one thing that's really important is the acoustic quality of the space. So we are working to design a space that bounces the sound out to the, to the audience. It's something that's an important aspect of acoustic design. And then on the right, you can see that there's a desire to sort of evoke some theatrical qualities of the stage. So it really feels and looks like a stage. A few images of look and feel, trying to establish that coastal character specific to Prince Rupert. And here's the proposed plan. So you can see the white oval in the center is the performance stage. You can see a bit of an audience gathering. And then the area outlined in green is the area that's affected by the project. There is some site grading, which means sort of moving around of the soil to create a better sort of sloped area for the, for the audience to observe performances. This is a floor plan looking down on the space as if you were to take the roof off. And so you can see the stage is set up for a more traditional auditorium performance, kind of like a symphony orchestra. What we've done very specifically, working with the community, with Veronica and working with the city's Parks Department, is identifying a shape and also using these moving walls to be able to both open and close the space depending on the needs of the space, but also at night to be able to close it, so that it becomes, becomes an enclosed, excuse me, an enclosed space. So there's both doors on the front and the back. The doors are also very helpful in different weather. And if it's, if wind is coming from a certain direction, the doors can be manipulated to help protect the performers from that. There's also a number of different performance types that the stage can accommodate. So you can see in the left, the more traditional form. You can see in the center, a more contemporary sort of in the round form that would also support dancing and drumming. And then you can see on the right, the potential to use this space as an after-hours private gathering. This is a view of the space looking towards the west, towards the harbor. This is what it looks like when the doors are closed. And this is a view from the interior, looking back sort of northeast. You can see some of the audience members. One that, one thing that's important to note is when the doors are in their open position like this, they also create a temporary storage space for instruments, other things that performers may need. Also acts as a small green room. There's also some chair storage in those two side areas. This is a scale model that we use to test the proportions. I have this beside me, but it looks a little bit better in the photos. And then just to close, I'm just going to very briefly share, we have a little video that just shows how the doors open and close. I'm just going to reshare that here, just one moment. Can everybody see that video screen? Nice, here is the video, I can play it a couple of times. Great, and that's our presentation, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you, and is there any questions from council? Councillor Cunningham?
Flat roof with all our rain. Is it cantilevered in any way for rain runoff or anything like that?
Did you catch that question there, Andrew?
Apologies, I'm just having a bit of a hard time hearing. Oh, I know I can hear other folks on the Zoom call, so I'm not sure if it's something potential with the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Uh, it's, it's a little bit quiet. I don't know if that's the same for other folks on the Zoom call.
Okay, the question was, does the roof have a cantilever for rain, for shedding rainwater?
Gotcha, so the, the roof is designed as a sloped roof. And so it does shed rainwater, but it's, it doesn't have an overhang over the, the walls that you can see on the outside. And the intention is that those walls would be, would be waterproof. It does have a bit of a cantilever over the, when the stage door is open, the front of the stage sort of curves out.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation. Okay. Is Mr. Mayor, are you still on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, we don't see your face on there. I just wanted to point out that when you're out of town, people show up to the meetings. If you look at the, look at all the people in the crowd tonight.
I, I, I didn't want you to be distracted by my facial expressions.
Okay, our second presentation is from Mr. John Farrell, Executive Director for the Community Futures regarding impending staff shortages. Come forward.
Now you can hear me? There we go, okay, I always forget that part. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing us tonight. My name is John Farrell, I'm the Executive Director of Community Futures. Joining me tonight are business leaders in town. Corinne from the Highliner, Christie from Opasushi and Chris from the Crest Hotel. And also in, in the chain, in the galley, we also have Andy Enns, President of the Chamber of Commerce, and Jamie Angus with TPR, who are also concerned about the workforce shortages. So I think we all know that we're very fortunate to be in a town of great opportunity. Prince Rupert is home to the fastest-growing port in North America and gateway to Asia. And with that, we've seen benefits of good, high-paying jobs in all the port-related industries. It's often said that you need a job, you can get one here. But that's not the whole story. Because those port jobs bring prosperity, but it's still the folks that are running the tills, stocking the shelves, making and delivering the pizzas, making the coffee and cleaning the rooms. And it's these workers who keep small business operating and moving. And the majority of them, they are new immigrants. Any here on international student permits through the college or temporary foreign worker permits. Now, I want to be clear, this is not, this is not what, it may work differently for big metropolitan areas like Calgary and, and Vancouver and Edmonton, but, but the reflect, the realities that's reflected in Prince Rupert and Terrace and Kitimat and Smithers are completely different. The federal government's recent immigration change, changes aimed at reducing housing and healthcare might work in downtown Vancouver, but those changes don't work for small businesses here. In our town, foreign workers aren't a convenience, they're a necessity. And now with delays in work renewals, workers are being told to stop work immediately. They've got 90 days and they sit at home. No income, no job security. Their families are in limbo and businesses are scrambling. This isn't just inefficient and unreasonable, it's unsustainable. So let me just give you one example. Michael Seabrook, who owns the local McDonald's, really wanted to be here tonight, but he can't. He's downstairs actually dealing with this workforce issue and meetings with McDonald's. And he has 80 people that work at our local McDonald's here. 50 of them are on permit. And he asked me to speak for him tonight and he said to me, "Tell council this is not just a McDonald's issue, it's not a Walmart issue, it's not a Crest Hotel issue." Right, this is a city issue. Just to give you a sense of scale, right, from those two permits, international student permits or temporary firm workers, Skinataxie has 60% of its drivers on permit. Safeway has 50% of its 78 employees on permit. Saveon Foods, 35%. Tim Hortons, 30%. Chancys Casino, 55%. There's three local restaurants in town that are 100% reliant on temporary foreign workers. So this is not a minor concern, this is a crisis. Tonight, I've invited some of my business colleagues to give you an idea of how it's affecting their enterprises and their small businesses. And maybe, Corinne, if I could just ask you to, to start? And we'll be brief.
So I am here representing the Highliner Hotel. We have a lot of our front desk staff, housekeeping staff, restaurant staff are all foreign workers. We also own the, own and operate the restaurant out of the Highliner Hotel. And we also operate the Ridge Hotel and the restaurant there. So we recently, a few weeks ago, did close the Ridge Restaurant rather suddenly. And it's not because of a lack of business or profit. It was because we lost one of our workers who happened to be a foreign worker and we just couldn't replace him. It was a head chef, so somebody who's skilled enough to be able to manage things on his own. And so we really just literally had to shut down the Ridge and we were lucky enough to have another restaurant that we moved all of our remaining staff to. So that is a very recent and, and very local result of the federal policy.
Sure, good evening, everybody. My name's Christie Farrell and I'm the owner of Opasushi in partnership with John here. And we've owned it for 25 years. Part of that, it was in existence for an additional five years. So we are representing 30 years of business in, in Prince Rupert. So when we started the business, we came in, we purchased it. We came in with existing staff on the Foreign Worker Visa Program. So I myself have been doing these applications for close to 20 years. Just a little bit of stats on this. In that timeframe, I've employed 110 employees plus their existing families on this program. They've all worked on foreign visas. 90% of them have acquired their permanent residency and remained in Canada, working full-time with varying industry. Some of them themselves have gone on to own businesses in Prince Rupert as well. So of all of our staff, we provide housing as soon as people arrive. So housing has never been something that they've had to take from anybody in town. We've put people up in our own homes or purchased a home specifically to make sure that these workers, when they come in, have a so-called soft landing. It's a very serious commitment to bring people in and their families from across the world. So we consider these people our family, above and beyond just working for us. So I've always been proud as an employer that we can provide economic stability and also we can provide people with better futures. I would argue that the majority of us in this room are settlers or come from immigrant parents. And I've always felt proud as a Canadian that I had some ability to pay that forward to other people, to give them a better future as well. So changes with Foreign Worker Program are deeply impacting the stability of our business. We are a viable, very good long-term business. Probably we could go on for another 30 years, but this program, we are currently, we've been capped with all of our employees. We currently have one employee who was told one day he could no longer work. So he's been at home for two and a half months and we need him to work. So we've accommodated and we're pulling like external shifts on people. So it's doing a complete disservice to our community and disruption to the business. And I'm very confident that our business will be closing due to this program if we don't have some ability to change the structure of it. So I'd like to just urge council to become aware of this issue, how it does impact our service and our, our community. These are the people during COVID that we relied on. And now we feel that we're turning our backs to them when we no longer so-called need them. So my call to action for the, for the council is to grandfather in existing LMIA's, that's Labor Market Opinion Impact surveys, and to reverse hiring caps for employers so we can continue on servicing our community. Thank you.
My name's Chris Calusi. I've been with the Crest since July. When I got there, got to get to know everybody. We have about 30, pretty around 35%, maybe a little higher, foreign worker permits. We also have other workers on different type of permits. There are people that just are working in town, open work visa. Are, one of the ones I think we've heard newest times here is cooks. We're, we're a lot higher in the cooks and there's different rules. So just to reiterate, we too had a couple of workers, just to give some really high-end background. You know, this, the labor file at the Canadian level has been changing really quick. Everything was working, I don't know if it was working, but there was a bit of a process here. And then up in the late fall, you know, there were some changes from, directed from the government of Canada. And so you have two parts going on. You have Service Canada, which lets, which determines the labor market impact. And then you have the IRCC, which provides visas. So just on this high-level stuff, we had employees, I think we had the same thing that Christie described. We had an employee who was renewing his LMIA, totally legal to work here. It came across a desk on an IRCC and a decision was made to pull their work visa on the spot. So on the day of, they lost all their Canadian rights. I wouldn't touch on this, but some people even had their kids kicked out of school. They lost healthcare. So I think the high-end message is, as we look at Rupert right now, I don't think we're going to be in the same situation as the rest of Canada. You know, we're not as driven by a manufacturing sector like, like Ontario and Quebec, which is probably going to take up, you know, a lot of the political, political demands. And, you know, quite the opposite, you know, being, you know, being a port city and exporting and exporting primarily to everywhere else in the world besides the US. You know, we may not have the same job challenges that other places have. And so the businesses here, you know, likely have a different situation than the rest of Canada. Yet it's going to be that, that political awareness piece that I think, I think that I would say is what we're kind of responsible for as a city and a region to make sure that our story doesn't get lost, that it's not the same story as the rest of Canada. So I'll just leave it at that.
So lastly, I, I just wanted to tell you what we need. We're looking for council to, to sign a declaration. Taylor Backrack, our MP, and I have been working on a, on a call to action. We're asking the federal government to do one simple thing. And that's treat rural northern DC differently. What you're hearing tonight is what you people are hearing in Terrace. You're hearing in Kitimat, you're hearing in Smithers, you're hearing in Houston. This is the same unfortunate song that's being played out. So we need to say to the federal government, we have a problem that's different from the rest of Canada. We aren't Calgary, we're not Vancouver, and we're Prince Rupert. And these are our challenges, businesses are going to close. So the call to action, which I'll, I'll provide to council, says, one, immediately renew existing work permits for northern and rural DC. Two, lift the caps on how many foreign workers local businesses can hire. Three, speed up the approval process so permits and paperwork don't get in the way of running a business. And three, four, most important, support rural Canada with immigration policies that reflect our needs and protect the dignity of the people who come here to work. So what I'd like to do is ask for your support, ask for your signature. This is going to be going out to all the local governments across Highway 16, all the, all the businesses, all the community and business leaders to sign. We've got, we've got some time because the new government, we have an election in April. It'll be a month and a bit before the new Immigration Minister is signed in, sworn in, sorry. And so we've got some time to build the momentum of this. And that's what we're hoping to do. Thank you.
Sorry, Councillor Adi?
Thanks, as you know, I was in attendance with Councillor Cunningham at the community forum held on this issue. I did bring, bring it back to council at our last meeting. I'm not, I don't know if anything's happened with it as yet. But what I was looking for were three things, basically. One, obviously, I think in line with what you're asking for with the declaration that we sign. I was phrasing it as a letter, but that sounds more, more emphatic. I'm happy to support that. Second, to coordinate that effort with other communities, you've mentioned them already. So I agree with that. And the third one is to endeavor to make clear to the port in particular the degree to which this can affect, for example, the cruise, the cruise season. So we're at the end of March, you know, we get to the end of April and that starts to be a real concern for the port. And I think their voice can have impact. I agree, there's a, a window of a month where probably not much is going to happen. And I'm, I'm not sure, clear on how that affects some of the people that you're talking about. I'm sure that's not a comforting notion that is, that we're stuck with this pause. But it does seem to be a political reality at the moment. And I do think that what you're asking for, all of your points are, are valid. I think that the point that I think resonated the most out of the meeting a couple of weeks ago was the notion of grandfathering. Because to me, I, I think the notion of immigration and, you know, how you calibrate the numbers of people that you're willing to accept as new immigrants and the reasons why you might do so, I think that's a valid place to exercise discretion. What I think is not valid is to change the ground under which the people that are already here are operating. I think that piece, grandfathering those people that are already here so that they, they can expect the situation and the conditions that they were brought here under to still be in place is really important. So I'm, I'm fully in support of how that comes out. And I agree that it is, it's an action that the city has to exercise a voice on.
Thank you. Councillor Randawa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for your presentation. So like last year, our council supported one of your application for the pilot project. So I think they're in work out. So are you still looking for reply for the pilot project or this declaration is enough there?
Yeah, the, we, Community Futures put in for a pilot project for Prince Rupert, Terrace and Smithers. We, apparently, we were, we got high marks. They, they saw a need. The pilot project is, would have given us very skilled, not entry level, which we're talking about today, but skilled labor. So it was aimed very much at healthcare, so we were, we, we got a lot of support along Highway 16. What happened was that the federal govern, government quit our contract, or canceled our contract for settlement services in August of this year. They did it in Kitimat and here. And then in October, when they said we weren't selected, they said, "You weren't selected because you didn't have settlement services." So it, that was very unfortunate. So, yeah, so we're not, we're not going to go for a pilot project. So this is, this is, and, and there really is a difference because that was for skilled labor and this is really just entry level. It's the people that are keeping the... And this is really just entry level. It's the people that are keeping the lights on. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the presentation. We've been alive to this issue for quite some time. And, and in conversation with Heather. Somebody watching at home, somebody in the audience, might just be looking at you and, and saying, wow, you know, so what? You, you won't have access to cheap labor. Now you'll have to hire some locals. How, how, how would you respond to that?
I would say that the people in town that are working are working at, for the port-related industries and making very good money. And they're not going to settle for working at wages that are minimum wage or, or a little bit more. And we are, most of, most of the businesses that we've talked to have always been looking for local. It's not like we're, we're looking for non-local. We would love to have local people work for us, but those doors are always open and nobody's coming through. So this is a necessity. We've had to, we are a town where people that want to work can work at port industries and make a very good wage. They're not interested in working for, they're not interested in some of the front-level, basic entry-level jobs that we're talking about. I'll just add one more thing to, to the, to the question you asked, Mayor Pond. When you're bringing people in who have experience in the jobs you need that you're not finding locally, let's say the cooks or, or even the hospitality sector, server or bartender, starts to stabilize your organization, and that actually helps you grow. And then you can bring people in who maybe don't have those skills and you can provide a firm training background. The problem when you clear out all the experts or the people, not everyone of experts, but let's say people have those hard skills, and then you're just trying to survive, is you're trying to just keep the doors on every day. And if you're a product that, any type that's trying to keep the doors on, you know, Rupert, in different, if, if, if we're hotels, we have people coming to visit us, they're going to judge on that. If we're consistently raising the bar, you know, we, you know, we, we live in a beautiful part of the world. We can bring more people in. But this program allows to bring people in who can actually help the businesses steady and grow through those expertise.
I'd like to add too, with service, we depend on our ratings. We are ranked and judged by everybody constantly. And the expectation is we provide good service and good training. I'd also like to say with my business, I've worked with the college, I've worked with the high schools. I've brought in consultants to talk about these issues. I have done varying programs with employment and training agencies so that I could train people. Some of these positions are just technically skilled, that you just can't get a local workforce to do. And again, the, every summer we get the student applications to come and, and wherever we can put them in, we want to have local people. They're the bread and butter of our community. They know everybody. But then they go away again. And in the, in the winter months, you're going to need consistent, stable workforce. So again, this is not something we prefer to use. It's something we require ourselves to stay in business to use.
It's actually very costly to bring a foreign worker into Canada to have them work at your establishment. And so the incentive as a business owner is to find local first because each worker that we bring in costs my business thousands of dollars to bring them in. So these people are working for, you know, the twenty-two dollar an hour range. And we've certainly searched local for, for that pay range and for those skills, but we just haven't been able to find them.
Councilor Cunningham.
Okay, as for letter writing and that, it's going to be sixty-eight weeks before the government is formed and people are put in their positions. And a lot of these foreign workers are hanging on by a thread right now. So would it be possible to also send letters to the deputy ministers, bureaucrats that are going to be there throughout the whole system? So when a new minister comes in, these people that they're getting advice from are going to be saying things to them and that. It's just, you know, a different angle to look at for it because when, when these ministers do get into their new positions, they're going to be bombarded with a lot of stuff and a lot of letters. And if they've got a bureaucrat that says, hey, you know, we've got a problem in northern DC, you know, I, I think you should be looking at it. It might bring a little more focus and attention and speed up the process a little bit. And also like, you know, from grandfathering, when we went to that immigration economic meeting, one thing that came up is England has had a, a real immigration problem for quite a while. Both sides of the coin. And they grandfathered everyone that was in the country and ended up cut off immigration. And it's worked fantastic. You know, we live in a country in an area where everyone wants to come. It's beautiful. You can prosper. And this is a really friendly town in most cases. So, you know, I, I, I think those are things that in the meantime might help a little bit. As well as, you know, like it's, I, I said to Taylor, why are we discussing this now when the House of Commons isn't in and you can't really do anything about it? We're playing catch-up here. And, and I really think that some of these people don't have six, eight weeks. I've talked to some of them and, you know, and I, I know we were talking about EI payments. They've been paying into the systems. And all of a sudden they're told, told they're not eligible. I don't know. I know Paula Grace was talking about, bring me some of the applications. We'll see where we can go with them. So I, I really don't know what happened there, but we've got to find a way to support them somehow. So I, I don't know. I'm just thinking from a letter point of view, it might, might help if we actually target the bureaucrats before we target the ministers that we don't even know who they're going to be yet.
So because we don't make decisions at committee of the whole, I'm wondering, Dr. Buck, can, can we push this into our regular meeting if we wanted to actually have this discussion this evening on tonight's meeting about supporting this?
Mr. Chair, this, this committee can make a recommendation to council and you can do it. You know, you can make that recommendation right now and then it can be dealt with in, in the next agenda as a, as a new item. Or we can bring it to the next council meeting and, and, and put it on the regular agenda then.
Councilor Eddy.
And I make a motion, I think that's what I'm supposed to do, that we bring this to the regular meeting to follow this meeting and discuss it there.
Okay, okay, moved by Councilor Eddy, seconded by Councilor Rendalla. All in favor? All, any opposed? Okay, so that's moved. So I think that we've heard everything and I appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work and trying to make our town move forward. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so now our third presentation. And I'm going to say this, and I hope that I'm not saying it wrong. Presentation from Guga Jung, is that correct? Which is Symbia Barnaby, in regards to the Sacred Fire family. If you want to step forward here and have a seat.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a little bit of cultural protocol that we are going to follow prior to our presentation. Part of it is I've handed to each one of the members that are here right now, an offer of traditional medicine. That's what this is here. I have some for those that aren't here and I'll make sure that those get to them as well. So I, I will start by introducing myself. My traditional feast at Haida name is Guga Jung. My English name is Symbia Barnaby. I'm here with many other members of the Sacred Fire family. We will conduct ceremonial process first and then introduce ourselves and then go on to the, our presentation. I will also just tell you, I am neurodivergent. It does take me a moment sometimes to find my words. And I really do ask that you would have patience and also extend grace as I'm trying to go through this presentation and for all of us while we're speaking. All right, I don't have my glasses on, so I've got my phone, so I'm going to do the best that I can from my phone. So this is our presentation to council. We want to look at walking alongside each other in a good way. Yes, I would really appreciate that. So I wanted to, to start out with introductions. I will, hopefully we'll be able to pass the mic. Those that are sitting here will just be able to introduce themselves, what nation that they're from. So their English name, or their traditional name, their English name and the nation that they're from. So we'll start out first with our matriarch that we're here with.
Natchez, Ochsna, Kitz, Kuhlan. English name is Bill Stewart.
Natchez, Kuthas, Tammy Dord from Getland.
Weya from Haida Nation, Julie White.
Kunda, Kewas, Haida Nation.
Dihtot, Wobst, Jumst, Ahlots, Kitzan Nation, Althamnachanet.
Sumgikat. Sumgikat. Legigikat. Wegigikat. Grovalset. Sekanahana.
My name is Winat. I'm from the House of Nishaganat, Pitiqanada. It's an honor to have these two well-trained people speak on our behalf. So thank you for that.
Like I said, my English name is Symbia Barnaby. It's okay for you to refer to me as Symbia when it does come time for questions. We want to start out by saying, Hawa, thank you. And we want to acknowledge that we are on Gitwol Yachts territory right now and that we are able to do this business today. Next slide, please. So we will do our best, to be brief. We are talking about two different subjects under the same umbrella. So we'll do our, the best that we can to give you the information that's needed. And this is very more high-level conversation. We understand that this is going to need more conversations. This isn't going to be the only conversation that we know that we're going to be having. I know that we've also already had many other conversations that have led to this conversation. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that we're doing our best to keep it concise, but also that there is cultural protocol involved. We are in a very colonial system and we understand that right now, but we're also doing the best that we can to be respectful. We are inviting you in to understand how we govern ourselves. And part of this is our teaching as best as we can. We understand that at a future date, there, there can be more cultural exchange and teaching and learning that can happen. So the first one we are going to be talking about is the sacred fire site. The next one is the totem poles. We'll end our presentation with our ask to mayor and city council and then describe what our next steps are. So we want to start off with a couple of concepts that we want to share with you really quickly before we get into those two subjects. So the first one, this is the site that we're talking about or in reference to. So the lot in front of the, what's known colonially as the Jimsekoni Civic Centre, where three of those totem poles lie and the, the lot of land across from the lake. So we're going to start out sharing a little bit about United Nations declarations on the rights of indigenous people. Particularly the Article twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty-six, but many others also, but this one in particular says that this article provides for the right of indigenous people to maintain and strengthen their distinctive spiritual relationship with their traditionally owned and otherwise occupied and used lands, territories, waters and coastal seas and other resources, and to uphold their responsibilities to future generation in this regard. So we want to make sure that we are sharing with you this concept going forward because all of the rest of what this is going to be is built off this concept. Next slide, please. So I'm going to pass the mic along to my co-presenter over here, who is amazing at sharing the cultural teachings part of it. And these are two concepts that we want you to also keep in mind moving forward throughout this presentation.
So on point one, we have the Adawak traditional oral history. Since ancient and in time of memorial, we have discussed, emphasized, displayed all our traditions through totem pole, through ancient ceremony, song and dance, our traditions through totem pole, through ancient ceremony, song and dance, through ancient display, displayed amongst longhouses and significant areas displayed throughout ancestral time. Number two, ayawak, which is carried out and displayed through our ancestral matriarchal law. Ayawak is defined by our lawkeepers, lawkeepers carried out by our matriarchs. Our Na'asiglamhannak, and today, for where this event and our display where we would like to hold and bring recognition to the people is Nijit X'akshna. She has disklagum, sumalgat, Na'asiglamhannak to the territory. So all our teachings and lessons go through council with the matriarchal law before we move forward in a good way, not to misstep. Happy, yeah? Thank you.
So to build off of what Ditaw just referenced is that all of our teachings are upheld from matriarchal law. We have a matriarch that we follow. When they ask us to do something, we're to carry it out. Typically, it is within a tribe or a nation that you're following. What's unique about the Sacred Fire family for us is that we are made up of many nations who have come together under the direction of Nijit X'akshna. We are doing, we are carrying out the wishes that she's asked us to. She's asked us in and has appointed us to do this work because we have the teachings on how to navigate Western systems and because we also have and carry deep traditional teachings that we're continuing to uphold. Part of the issue that we're dealing with is colonization, and through colonization and dispossession of land and the beginning of the city on top of these lands, this is what we are faced with, is dealing with multiple sets of laws, quote-unquote, systems and people like yourselves, who we know and understand are meaning to do the best by the people that you're here to be representatives to. And this is why we wanted to share with you how we are governed and who we are taking our direction from. I also wanted to make sure that we point out the difference between band council government and hereditary governance. So band council government, in 1869, the federal government created the Gradual Enfranchisement Act. This led on to what became the Indian Act, so that was in 1876, which became law, and indigenous governance systems were replaced with elected and/or appointed band councils. This led to the Indian Act imposed a colonial government system, imposed a colonial government system on First Nations communities, where the goal was assimilation into greater Canadian society. When we're looking at hereditary governance, on the other hand, their governance has come from time immemorial, from a time beyond record, beyond tradition, beyond any kind of account, written account. We are, the matriarchal system of leadership, it was commonplace, not just in this region, but all throughout Canada, or what we refer to currently as Canada. Matriarchs represent how interdependent ecosystems form the holistic aspects of personal community and universal wellness. Clan systems follow matrilineal lines, strict teachings, grooming of future hereditary leadership, and tied to the land. So when we're talking about matriarchs, they have a wealth of knowledge that they need to have in order to be referred to as a matriarch. It isn't just an older woman that we're talking about. They are to understand where their boundary lines are, where their territory lies, what, who's to be coming up in, within their hereditary systems, who is in place, what teachings need to be shared, and also who are consulted when it comes time to poles, other structures, feasting, all of those things. The, what's really important to point out here, when we talk about hereditary governance, it doesn't serve a term, right? When we're looking at band councils as an elected system, they're elected, they're there for a period of time as they're elected, and then they're off, or they're re-elected. Where governance systems, when we're talking about matriarchal law, it's continuous. Next slide, please. So that's the background information so that you have a better understanding of where we're going with this. So we're talking about the Sacred Fire site first, so we're talking about protecting spiritual and ceremonial rights. So this project or this endeavor came together because of a connection that we, Graham Ditaw and I have. We helped to raise the Missing and Murder Indigenous Women Totem Pole that you may be familiar with outside, just before you go on to the Port Edward Turnoff. We held ceremony out there. We navigated the provincial governance, our government system, the municipals. We've had conversations with the mayor, with the province, with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, with the mayor of Port Edward, and with the local, or with the traditional governance system. We had to navigate through all of those layers in order to put that in place. We held fire ceremony out there as well, so we have that connection. Then he happens to be Gixan. They were the ones that were doing the opening for the All Native Basketball Tournament last year, so for 2024. Part of protocol, when we are to do any kind of work on somebody else's traditional territory, we're meant to ask permission. That isn't something that's always been followed with the All Native Basketball Tournament. This is a traditional practice. The Gixan Thunder reached out and said, "We want to make sure that we're asking consent, permission, blessing from the hereditary land title holders." And I knew who they were. I was actually connected with them, so I was able to bring them together. And for a month, we met over Zoom, and then eventually in person, and then did work one-to-one with this family to help prepare them to carry out the duties that they were going to carry out alongside the Gixan Thunder. This family asked them to, Graham specifically, to hold sacred fire ceremony for a whole week. Originally, the ask from the Gixan Thunder was one day, and then the family said, "Can you do that for one whole week?" And that was when I was asked in to help as well, because it's also teachings that I hold. So both of us have those teachings in order to carry out a fire ceremony of that grandeur and that kind of undertaking. This is when we reached out to the fire department and then city council and put in an application for a special event permit, spoke with fire chief Jeff Beckwith about what it is that we needed to do. So there was a lot of, a lot of back and forth between us and communications manager and city workers downstairs in order to get this permit in place. There was requests on behalf of the city for us to undertake, one of those being insurance, others, you know, there was a list. Anyway, I don't want to go into depth. There is an email if we need to go through it, but there was an ask in order for it to go through. We complied with some of those things, and we also said that there's teachings that we hold ceremonially, traditionally, that would far exceed any kind of request. And we explained in that meeting that that's how we were going to show up, and those were the teachings that we were going to follow. Since then, we've gone and done ongoing work alongside each other with the Gixan, with the Haida, and with the Niskup, which are surrounding First Nations to this area. We've also supported them in endeavors that they have wanting, are calling on us to do. We've also traveled to the New Hauch territory, because we had people from the New Hauch who had showed up to the Sacred Fire as well. So this was a rekindling of those connections. This is about relationship building. This is about wellness of our community and wellness of the people that are here, not just us, but extended family, all the people that we have in our network. We watched, I would say, over 300, 400 people show up throughout that week that came and sought us out and had ceremonial practices shared with them, and it was a good turnout. Next slide, please. There's just a couple pictures of the one that we did this year, so this was the second time that, or second, I will say, a big one that we did. The first picture there is kind of what you would expect, or what you could see going down to the site. The very top middle picture was a ceremony that a few of the people that are in the room right now attended. Mayor Pond and Mr. Poochie were in attendance. We had a feast that was held, and we invited hereditary people from other nations to come and attend this fire, and we invited mayor and council to also attend part of this. When we do this type of work, we have a feast hall typically. That's our governance system. So similar to what you're doing right now in this space, we would be in a feast hall, and we would settle any kind of business in a feast hall. So we invited them to come and have a feast with us, to witness work that we were going to undertake. Part of the conversation, I'll put a little, plant a seed for the next part of the presentation, is that a conversation came up, arose from this feast about poles and how they needed to come down. I'll park that thought, and we'll talk about it afterwards, but I just wanted to say that this is where that part of the conversation came from. We brought all of these people together. We asked them all to bring grandfather stone from their territory or their region. They brought it, they placed it, they were invited to place it amongst the circle, so we have those same stones. We've used them repeatedly in that site, and it's to us as oral, as people who follow oral tradition, this is our way of confirming that people have given blessing and permission to us to do this work and undertake this work. So by mayor and Mr. Poochie attending, it's showing that the city, culturally, the city should have been aware of the work that we're doing and that we're trying to continue to do, because part of their cultural duties would be to come back and explain what happened, what they witnessed, and what your roles and responsibilities are as a city. Next slide, please. So what we're here to talk about specifically around the Sacred Fire site is around a permanent site. Currently, how it has gone is that we've had the fire, and then the material that we used was removed from the site after an extended period of time of it being left there, because we were trying to have a conversation with mayor and council to say we want to have a permanent site there. What we've had to do is take them off-site and then bring them back onto site, take them off-site, and bring them back to site each time we do a fire. So what we're looking at is having a permanent site. We want to share with you the plan. We want to look at having permanent signage. So there's a sign there. It's a designated sacred fire site. This is an example from the City of Toronto, who have also undertaken the same process. There are many other spaces that have permanent signage to show that that's a sacred site in order to do public awareness around it. The other piece we're looking into doing is public awareness, so social media campaign, local radio or regional radio, so being able to have that interview play on to a wide range of people to share with them that this is the initiation of the site, the permanency of the site, and also what safety measures. So if you look at the things, one of the handouts that I sent or I've passed to you, so Sacred Fire teachings, I won't go into it, but I've written out some of those teachings. I will tell you that it is a privilege to have these written and shared with you. These are parts of my cultural teachings. As oral people that follow oral tradition, this wouldn't be something that would be written. This is out of courtesy from us to you that it's written, so that you would be aware of what some of those teachings are around safety and how we conduct ourselves at a site. This would be something we would turn around and share, say, with CBC. I've already spoken before with one of the ladies there to say, "This is something we want to see done," so that they can give the word out in this area, and looking at also with CFNR, our local radio, to be able to share with us. Part of what we would talk about is safety around it, recognition of that site, who was there when this site came to be, and how we're to conduct ourselves. The other conversation that I've had is with the Jimsekoni Civic Centre around a display case. I've spoken to a couple different people about that. They do have display cases that sometimes that they rotate. Our suggestion would be to have a permanent display case that's there for the time being to show the history of the site, the traditional territory, who's that building resides on or is placed on, and then also some of the history of like what we're sharing with you right now, so that there'd be more public awareness around it. The other piece that we would look at is a use plan, so that we would understand the protocol that was, that would take place at a site like this, and also around insurance. You know, we understand that we live in a colonial, within colonial systems, part of that, and part of the concern to the city and is around public safety, and we understand that. And each time we have had a fire, we have applied for $2 million liability insurance, and we've carried it. We are looking into how we are able to carry it by partnering with one of the local nonprofits that we have worked alongside, who's carried that insurance for us the last few times that we've done it. And then the other piece is around fundraising. We understand that we don't, currently, we don't see us forming a nonprofit, because we are cultural people. This is teachings that we are trying to follow. What we would look at doing is partnering with or alongside other nonprofit, nonprofits to apply for funding such as this, and then also looking to the city around what kind of grants and stuff like that happens around reconciliation and about, yeah, around reconciliation and shared governance. Next slide, please. So we're going to shift gears really quickly. I thank you for keeping, staying with me. We're jumping from one thing to the next. The next thing that we want to talk about or address is the totem poles. So within the Simchian language, Simmalif, we talk about, are we referred to totem poles as p'tsam? There's a couple different words or titles for different types of poles. I will use totem pole in English for your reference right now. So it's recorded that the Simchian raised various types of poles, which depict specific cultural references and representations. So this looked like written and displayed on poles outlining boundaries, that's one of those things, histories, so the time-depth continuation for a specific tribe or specific house group, and then the other one is supernatural mythology. These would be raised in all different places upon people's territory, and then the next piece I wanted to refer to is the cultural protocol. So in order for a pole to be raised, it needs to, they're meant to follow Master Carver's law. Master Carver's law follows universal laws and outlines roles, responsibilities, duties, and strict measures. The Carvers are appointed and counseled by high shamanism, groomed by teachings of ancestral time. The Carvers are knowledgeable of history, are meant to be knowledgeable of history and lineage. They are inspired and directed by Nachmok, which means like medicine people, and they are connected to the land, water, and territory, specific to where they're raised. These are important points to point out as to why we're talking specifically about totem poles. So when we showed you that site, all of you, I'm sure, have been to the Civic Centre. You know the poles that we're talking about. There are three poles that sit across from the Jimsekoni Civic Centre. They are, if you can go to the next slide. Please, I'm thinking. They were raised, so I'll give you two sentences, so you have a little bit of a history. There is one handout that I've given you guys that has a little bit of the history. We've taken on the research around this, so there's much more in-depth, but this was just a little bit of the ground, you know, we've done the groundwork on the research, but we wanted to give you guys a little bit of something to reference for history. So originally, there were poles that were erected in Prince Rupert around the 1930s. These poles were taken from Haida territory. They were quoted to be "found," quote-unquote. They were quoted to be "found", quote unquote, in, quote unquote, abandoned Haida villages and brought to Prince Rupert and then erected here. When I just told you a little bit about that Master Carver's Law, those poles are meant to, are significant specifically to that territory, the people who raised it and the governance that was in charge of that pole being there. So for us, for people to take poles from a different people, a whole different nation, a Haida nation, and bring it here to Simchian territory, that was a huge no-no. That's a cultural, it's forbidden, actually. But it was something that happened as part of trade, as part, like of trying to bring attraction to Prince Rupert. So if you look back 1930s, you know, there, there's Charles Hayes, there's a plan to have, you know, the Grand Trunk Railway along, you know, from Prince Rupert along the rest of Canada. You have to understand where they were coming from. We get it, but it was also a huge cultural faux pas. The city, through the Board of Trade, so City of Commerce, which I think is what it would translate to now, had involvement with this, and so did the Grand Trunk Railway, which eventually became CN Rail. What we're trying to point out here is that these poles came, they had no business being here. They were raised and they were moved. And then at one point in time, there was a question of integrity of these poles because of, they were degrading at some point. There's other stories about some of them being cut down, cut in pieces because people didn't understand the significance to them. And then what ended up happening was that they commissioned Simchian artists to do replicas. So those three poles that are standing there right now are replicas of Haida poles, which also would be a cultural, would be culturally forbidden. This isn't something that we're meant to be doing, is doing replicas of somebody else's stories, depictions of that, of their family line, their stories specific to the things, like I said, their histories, their supernatural beings, all those things. So we understand that, one, taking it, two, planting it, three, moving it, and then four, replicating it, that the city had involvement with all of those steps. Next slide. Oh, no, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, I just want to point out really quickly, so work that we've done, part of the reason why this conversation is being had is that when we were at, we had the feast that was held last year prior to the first fire for the All-Native Basketball Tournament, there was a conversation that was breached in that feast with Mayor Pond and with Mr. Poochie around the integrity of the poles that are standing in the community right now. One of the questions was asked was, who do we talk to when it comes time to bringing these poles down? Thank you. When it comes time to bringing these poles down, I'm gonna take a sip. Sorry. From a safety point of view, it was pointed out that they were worried about the integrity of some of the poles. What was brought forward is that we understood that these were replicas and that we wanted to have further conversations. We had discussion at it, there is a recording of it. If somebody needed to or wanted to have that recording, we would bring it out. Part of the conversation, when it's breached in a feast like that, it becomes business that we are to take on. Because all of the work that we do happens in a feast hall, we are under the impression that now this is a contract, oral contract, that the city has asked us to undertake this work. So we started to do the research part of it so that we could start to bring this information forward. We reached out to the Haida Nation. So luckily, some of us who are here right now and a part of this group are Haida and we knew the connections to make. We also traveled to Haida Gwaii and told them about the work that is going to be undertaken to start reconnecting with some of the key people. So we're looking at the descendants of people that were connected to the original poles. So not the replicas, but the original poles in Haida Gwaii. We also reached out to the museum that's there, to Nika Collison and James McGuire. They are the people that helped to run the Haida Heritage Centre. The other people that we reached out to are descendants of William Jeffrey and Charles Doudward. They are the carvers that did the replicas, the ones that are you see standing right now. They are from the Getwell Yachts tribe and Gen, like. So, but those, they are descendants, they are from tribes that are not Getzies. So Getzies, that's who this hereditary family is, that, that's whose territory the civic centre is sitting on. So you can see that there's, even though they're Simchian people, Simchian carvers that are going to, that were asked to carve, they were from a different tribe than whose traditional territory that we're on. So part of the teachings is that we're taught that we have no authority to undertake work or harvest or ceremony on territory that belongs to another tribe. The last part, like I said already and kind of emphasized that CN and the Board of Trade, Prince Rupert, so poles were taken, placed in Prince Rupert, Grand Trunk had involvement. The Royal BC Museum also had, they had commissioned these, these guy, these carvers in order for the replicas to be erected. The point of why we're bringing this forward is look at all the different parties that are involved. We've reached out to each one of them. We've started to build those conversations and those relationships with those people involved. The reason why we're bringing this conversation forward was that we did address this in an email to Mayor and Council last year, and it wasn't addressed. It got pushed back, it got pushed back while we were doing this, this research. And then we've gotten an email from Rosa to say, pause, we are going to bring a group of stakeholders together from Lacholans, from Lakatla, and we will, we will convene this group in October, like in the fall. That was the email that we received. That email doesn't acknowledge the other parties that are involved and it discounts and discredits the conversations that we've already had. And it doesn't include the hereditary governance of the territory that we're talking about. When we're talking about Lacholans, we're talking about a band council. When we're talking about Mount Lakatla, we're also talking about a band council. So you're talking government to government instead of government to governments. Next slide. I can't say the word properly because I'm still learning how to speak Simalif. But Google yes, that means like property of the tribe. So when we're talking about poles, those belong to lineages specifically to the people whose territory it's on. It doesn't belong to band council. Does that make sense? Culturally relevant items do not belong to a government. They go, they belong to the people or to a society. They belong to the people hereditarily, to bloodlines. So thank you for sticking with me for this, the ask to the city. We want four different things. One, appoint a staff member to work alongside of us. We understand that we are culturally the right people to be doing this work with those three poles specifically. There's other conversations that need to be had with Getwell Yachts about the other poles that are located around the city because that's their territory. We are not speaking for them, we're not doing cultural work on their behalf. We're talking about those poles specifically and anyone that lies on the Getzies territory. So we're looking for staff, staff work, somebody to work alongside of us, not to take over the work, but to work alongside of us. The second one is formally recognize the site and the lands. So looking at that we're able to go and put a permanent site there and that it's going to have permanent signage and that we're going to work alongside each other for this to be put into place. The other piece is around funds directed towards. So when we listed out the people that were involved in the original poles coming here, being erected, moved, and then replicated, the city had involvement throughout the entire thing. So there is, that's the acknowledgement of responsibility, right? You, the City of Prince Rupert, through a passing of hands, had responsibility in having this work being done. When we're talking about funds directed, that we would want to work alongside you to have grants, other things to be applied for through the municipality. And then also looking at what other groups that we, we may be able to work alongside in order to have this business completed. If you have any questions, you can ask. And if you have further communication, it's okay to communicate to me and then I will bring it back to the people that are here. There are other people that weren't able to make it here today. We have had lots of support from the community who have come forward, not just Indigenous people. We've had support from many other nations, other backgrounds, curiosity coming forward and saying, hey, what it is that you guys are doing and, yeah. If you guys have any questions, we're open to questions.
From my perspective, you definitely well explained it. So I don't have any questions, but is there anyone else that has any questions? No.
Just more of an observation. Thank you for the history lesson. For the last two weeks, I've been asking people and obviously I've been asking the wrong people because you're sitting here explaining this to me and I'm like, wow, wow, wow. Because, and you and I'll be talking more simply, trust me, because it's some of the misinformation I've had and that's just amazing. But when you talk about the totem poles and if William Jeffries, was he, he commissioned them or carved them?
He was commissioned to do it. He was paid. And there is, we, we went down into the archives and it shows that he was commissioned. He was paid three thou, something like $3,000 each pole to do replicas of.
So he carved them then?
Yeah.
So the existing Jeffries family?
They're notified.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Like it's just, you know, I've got bits and pieces of this and that's why I want to sit down with you and try to put these bits and pieces together because.
We.
This is the first time talking with council here. And I think it's very important that you stand with us. I mean, we've been here for a long time and I've got no input from council at all. And we're all about sharing. I mean, we all live in Prince Rupert, but like it's very, it's informative when you know a little bit more about our culture and why we do it. And as this gentleman said here, you know, he's gonna be talking to her a little bit more often. We're not here to disturb people, we just want you to make aware that you know we are still here. And I wish you a good evening. Thank you so much.
One, just a couple of questions. You're talking about a permanent structure. Are you talking about a permanent fire that's gonna be going 24/7 or just for occasions?
The, the, what our ask is to have a permanent structure. So we gave an example of what we ideally would like it to look like. The dimensions are the exact same as what's already there in that box that we have been using. So that, that specific area. The structure would be open and would stand. There's space to have firewood when we, prior to doing a fire. The firewood wouldn't stay there so that there isn't an inclination from people that are unaware of it to use it as just a campfire because it is a sacred fire site. That's the intention of why we would go to do the public awareness campaigns and why we would have that case there in the first place is to do those teachings around why we want to have that site there and so that you would reduce the likelihood of vandalism, the, reduce the likelihood of people using it for, or misuse of it, right? That's the whole hope and point. What we're doing here isn't just about saying, hey, let's put some four walls up, right? What we're talking about is the wellness of our community. Not just First Nations people, but everybody in this community. We rely on northern health, you know, for physical health. We rely on northern health for mental health. We're talking about spiritual health. When we're talking about intergenerational trauma, it's a spiritual disease. We are impacted by it greatly. Not one First Nations person that you know has any less than one form of trauma that we're dealing with. We're talking about compound trauma, intergenerational trauma, lateral violence. What we're talking about is addressing that. We understand that healing happens through ceremony. That spiritual means to deal with a spiritual disease has to give way. This is what we're proposing.
Okay, and one, one question that keeps popping up with people that might not know any history of a sacred fire. You know, I've had people say, well, I've never heard of a sacred fire before and, and things like this. I've lived here all my life and things like that. So that's something that I think is, if you're gonna have that case or that, an explanation of it. Because I've had people say, well, they only have that on the other side of the Rockies. And you know, like, you know, these are things that we're gonna have to educate people with because there's, there's so much misinformation in our world all the time and then on specific things too. So, you know, like I said, I'm really glad, you know, I've got lots of questions, but trust me, I won't take up our time now.
I'll just share one last thought. You know, why people are unfamiliar with it in this moment is, one, the big answer is colonization. Two, is that we don't have a longhouse or a big house right now. That's where a fire would have been, would take place, right? That's where it would be utilized. Fire ceremony is a prayer amplifier. We understand natural law and we understand spiritual law. Spiritual law is governed by natural law. Energy can't be created, can't be destroyed, can only be transferred, transformed, and transmuted. We use fire ceremonies in order for us to help transform that energy. So when we come with trauma to that space and we use ceremony, it helps us to transform that instead of continuously transferring that trauma onto the people that are around us. That's why we use fire ceremony. There's other ceremonies that we also have in our spiritual toolbox. Part of the other reason is that not everybody's been groomed into having those teachings. So Graham, being here, he has been brought up in, very rooted in his culture. So the Giksen are very culturally intact compared to where the Simchian are right now. Geographically located in a place where many nations came to trade. You know, like if you ever Google grease trails, look it up. You know, understand that there's trade route all along the Skeena River. Many other nations came to this space. So if, it was also one of the spaces that was hit with colonization and then inland, right? So there are people like the Giksen who are fierce about keeping their culture intact. And here we are on the coast that's been impacted. There's a story that Belle has shared with us that because of the Indian Act, it made it so that we were not allowed to practice our culture, right? Part of that was a ban of ceremonies, ban of being able to wear regalia and gift, the ban of feasting, right? Part of that, they cut down totem poles and they banned people from being able to do that. This is part of the assimilation process that we're talking about. So the story that she shared with us is that in resistance, it was her father raised a flagpole because this was the closest thing that they could do. And then when you look at the origin of the All-Native Basketball Tournament, why was that put in place? It was, we were not allowed to gather. This was a way for us to gather under the guise of sports, to be able to talk about land claims, talk about what was going on regionally, talking about the things that impacted us. This is why these things go hand in hand. Why this sparked and why this took off for us is because this is part of reclaiming our culture and stepping into positions, our placements that we are meant to have all along. And we were invited in because we share those, we hold those teachings, we share the teachings, and we're connected to other culturally intact people.
Thank you for everything you've said tonight. It was, it was great. Oh, Councillor Skelton-Murven, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and sharing these pieces. I think it really puts it in perspective when you think of the population of Toronto, which is north of 3 million. And the Indigenous population makes up about 0.8% of that, so not even 1%. And the tens of millions of dollars that they've put in to having these spaces and these sacred spaces and something called the Indigenous Centre for Entrepreneurship and Innovation, that they put millions and millions of dollars into trying to establish. into, um, trying to establish those relationships with a very small fraction of percentage of their, uh, community, or collective city, I would, I would imagine. Uh, for us here in Prince Rupert, we make up about almost 50% of, up north of that now, um, as Indigenous peoples, and I think for us to not have those cultural spaces, and especially those sacred spaces and things that help empower the collective, the community, sharing those cultural aspects, um, and, and not only just with each other as Indigenous peoples, but with the collective, the community. Um, folks that, you know, many had come to check out what we were up to, uh, uh, that's the Missing and Murder Indigenous Women site, you know, that we had the, the honor of working alongside you, uh, we as in Taking Off My City hat and Moving Over to the Simchuan Prosperity Society, um, helping facilitate that process, and just the curiosity that came out of that and the learning that came out of that, because a lot of folks don't realize, you know, the, i- if I were to stop and ask, like, you know, where is the Adaw or the Ayaw written down, anywhere, really? A lot of it is oral, but also it hasn't been put to paper, so people can actually go learn and reference it. They'd have to go and talk to somebody that is a knowledge keeper, um, looking at spaces like this that create little aspects in storytelling and history, where folks can go and connect with that space, um, and learn a little bit of more of it. I mean, there's so many other benefits outside of this, I mean, obviously the immense benefit is the cultural piece and the healing aspects of it, but for folks to learn and connect, uh, tourism and other things, and, you know, when we have national level gatherings like the All-Native Basketball Tournament, where we have nations coming from all across the country and abroad, uh, coming together and, and being a part of this, I think this is really huge, and it's, it's kind of a no-brainer to me, and it's something that I think, uh, was definitely worth exploring. I know we can't make a motion in this particular stance, but maybe it's something that, again, it's the first of many conversations, and I think when we first initially put forward something called a reconciliation framework motion that became something that I still believe to this day, which is why these conversations are so important, that it lives and breathes like relation, and evolves like relationships do. It's not something that is, we now have ticked off our box of reconciliation and it's over, uh, we've, we've done our part. It's like, no, a lot of this stuff is things that we're gonna be having to, you know, walk alongside one another and paddle together if we're gonna do this well and do this correctly. So thank you all for being here, and I apologize for being away. I, uh, I'm actually working with a federal initiative right now at this time, um, that's something I haven't disclosed much with the public until recently, um, but it's called, uh, the Empowerment Pathways Initiative, and it's, uh, it's an Indigenous inmate entrepreneurial development program, so looking through the world of a lens of restorative justice and helping support those that have gone through the system, trying to rebuild their lives and reintegrate, uh, and giving those self-employment skills, much of which, many of which are cultural leaders and artists themselves, so, um, seeing initiatives like this and how important this is, and how the work is also being down, done down here in the Lower Mainland at a larger scale, I think there's so much potential for us as a community that, again, resides, I, I think, uh, the mayor hit the nail on the head with a, a quote, uh, from many meetings ago, that he, that, uh, Prince Rupert is technically the largest Simchuan community, really. We have so many folks coming from all walks of life and, you know, and we have, uh, I can see there's a little bit of, in the background, I can't quite make it out, but I've had other elders tell me that, oh, Rupert's just a big res, exactly, exactly, right? It's, exactly, exactly, yeah, no, thank you, yeah.
Can I add one last thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
One last thing too, um, that didn't get, uh, included in the slides, um, that I wanted to share. Um, as Indigenous people, oftentimes, um, there's, it, it's important to share when we're talking about anti-racism and reconciliation, um, that there's oftentimes, there's no intention for actions to be racist or discriminatory, um, but the way that it's experienced by Indigenous people can be that, and can be internalized. One of those things, uh, that's important to think about is there's intention and impact, right? There may be no intention to be, to, for your actions to, to come across that way, but the impact to Indigenous people can be that of, of, as discrimination or internalized the racism, right? So unawareness, um, taking a long time to take steps and having to come to, um, colonial systems is often experienced, um, by Indigenous people as, as hardship, as, and internalizes discrimination and racism. One of the things that we wanted to point out is that there's a cultural timeline that may not coincide all the time with, um, colonial timeline. When we, we have directions as to when we're to do cultural activities and undertakings, um, and that cultural undertaking for this family, um, is in June. So when we're talking about those poles coming down, it's by then, that's the timeline that they have. It's important for us to, and I understand that there's no decisions, we understand that we're listening, and we get that this is a lot more complicated, especially if there's a lot of stuff that, that needs to come to the table for you to make informed decisions. Um, but it's also their, their protected right to do their cultural duties and ceremonies and spiritual practices, um, and that there are cultural teachings that they abide by, that if they don't follow, they can become sick spiritually from, and this is part of what we're trying to heal from. So understand that, uh, this conversation needs to, ha, has already started a long time ago and needs to be prompt, um, in order for them to, to, um, undertake the cultural t, um, prac, cultural duties that they need to, to take on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Oh. Go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for coming, uh, for walking alongside us, uh, and, and, uh, understanding that, um, these are always a little bit bumpy encounters, and we get better. Uh, I, I'd like to think we all get better. Um, it, it, the, there were challenges to this first sacred fire, I know that. Um, we overcame them together, um, and in all of this, uh, you have displayed, uh, Slumsk respect, and I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for the time you took to be with us this evening.
Howa?
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we have questions and inquiries from members of council. Not seeing any, I will have a, uh, motion to adjourn to a regular council meeting. Moved by Counsel Forester, seconded by Counsel Randawa. Okay. Thank you.
Three drinks at the crest, uh, the Christian door.
Still, you don't wanna? It's all super, super.
You don't wanna stay for a regular meeting? That's it.
See you, everybody.
No.
We have to stay, so you should too.
Well, it looks like we're down to a Herb Pond audience again.